The September 24, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order. We will ask Commissioner Darlene Love to do the invocation tonight, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Superintendent Greg O'Brien. Everyone, please stand.
May our heads tonight to this council and to those that are here, as we lift our eyes into the hills whence come with our help, again in the days that we do not know what is coming, but thank you for these days that we are here. Blessed is council, give us peace, love, that we may have harmony and love, and thank you for all the things that have been done for this city, in your name, amen.
Raise the flag, right hand over your heart, ready? Again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here. I hope you guys all had a great couple of weeks since the last meeting, and I just want to start off with an observation. It's actually, it's kind of a cool that there's a lot of young people here, but it's kind of like a message and observation. I went up to a funeral up in Napa, and went up with my parents, both my parents, up to a funeral for one of my second cousin's mother who passed away, and it was just an awesome experience being able to be up there because I hadn't seen my cousins for a long time. And it just made me think, you know, how important it is, you know, I see my cousins, how strong they were losing their mom and their dad about like 20 years ago, and how they were, you know, strong about it, how it was emotional, and we were celebrating our life. And it's just an observation that for all the young kids that are here, like, at some point, we'll have to face losing our parents, really take advantage of the opportunities you have if they're still with you, to enjoy them, and because you never know when something could happen, when you'll get that call saying that somebody's in hospital, something's happened, and you have to face a reality that you never thought you'd face. So hopefully, you haven't experienced that yet, and if you have, you know, rest in peace with your parents, and it's just an observation, just for the young kids that are here. But as part of that, I experienced my parents, being with them for like two or three days, I mean, it was great. A couple of times, they were like, but one of the things that came out of that was, we visited the Jelly Belly Factory in Fairfield, California, and we saw the whole factory. We had to put those, you know, those dorky hats on, or else, you know, we wouldn't be able to get some free samples, but I bought these at the end, and I want to share them with everybody here. These are the Jelly Belly Flops, the irregular jelly beans, the stuff that's like, they're safe, they're not like radioactive, they're not radioactive or anything, but I wanted to make sure that you guys, since there's a lot of young kids, I'm going to cut off a little corner right here so everybody gets to pour a little bit, so that everybody could taste it, okay? So I hope you enjoy it, and maybe after the meeting, you guys can tell me what flavor you tasted. All right, so does anybody here up here want some, before I pass it on to the group?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, we'll pass it on to the group over here. Let's pass around, put a little bit so everybody can get some, okay? I hope you guys enjoy. Jelly Belly. There we go, there we go, we got to take her. You can tell me later what flavors you got.
You go my healthy habits.
Healthy habits, yeah, we're supposed to be a healthy eating, active living community.
That's right, exactly.
It has fruit servings inside.
Okay, guys, so everybody just pour a little bit, and just enjoy that. Okay? All right. Mayor Protem Valentine has a presentation on the agenda. Can you please proceed?
Thank you. So this is a presentation recognizing the 23 Hawthorne High School manufacturing and engineering students who graduated from the South Bay Workforce Investment Board's Aeroflex Pre-Aprenticeship Program, and I'd like to invite the Executive Director of the South Bay WIB, Jan Vogel, to come up and say a few words about the program, and then I'd like to read the Certificate of Appreciation that we have provided for each one of the graduates, and call them up so that we can take a picture with them. Mr. Vogels, a pleasure to have you.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Protem, and mayor, and council members, city manager, city attorneys, like coming home, it really feels nice over here. Just a little background on this Aeroflex Program. A few years ago, South Bay WIB, in conjunction with some of our partners, filed with the Department of Labor an apprenticeship program to start an apprenticeship for engineering, aerospace engineering individuals, and we were lucky enough to be certified as the first ever in the country aerospace engineering apprenticeship program. So Department of Labor certified us during that time, since we started, we've had, I think it's 288 graduates from this program. Many of those are pre-apprentices that go through the high school programs, and we're so proud of that, and just as a side note, which some of you know already, because of that success, we started a bioscience apprenticeship program, which has just started, and we're going to have 5,000 in the next four years, 5,000 apprentices and pre-apprentices across the country in aerospace and bioscience, and many of them will come from right here. And that's why we're here today, to honor the 23 students who is one of the groups that have gone through the pre-apprenticeship program for high school. We have other programs for college and incumbent workers, and et cetera, but these kids did such a great job, they've gone through all the programs that they're supposed to, and by the way, it's such an honor and privilege to work with Sentinel Valley Union High School District. I mean, they have so many different small academies, they're doing so much for those kids in that district, and they have nine small academies and two career pathways, and it's just a wonderful school, wonderful things are happening. I think Dr. O'Brien, you want to, can I bring up Dr. O'Brien to share the podium with me here? And he, you know, he got all dressed up today in his pink shirt to be here, but he's never short of words, so let me have Dr. O'Brien say a couple of words about this.
All right, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem Valentine, and members of the council, and of course, members of the audience and the city of Hawthorne, it is always such a privilege to be here with you and to continue to build our bonds between the city, our school district, and of course, the South Bay WIB has been with there, with us and with all of us, just from the very beginning, doing great things for our students and for our city, and it's just exciting to be a part of that. I actually did bring a brochure with us that has those nine academies and two pathways there, which we'll be passing out to. Also, we have a little token of appreciation for our city council. This is our theme for the year at Sentinel Valley, which if you can see on the front, it's got a big calculator with a bunch of different numbers on there. Statistics show that math is one of the most challenging doorways to get through to be able to graduate from college and to enter into the workforce successfully. So we looked at our test scores, we looked at the needs at the universities, we said it's something we want to focus on. So on the back of this t-shirt is actually our theme, which says...
Show me the math.
Show me the math. And so, I don't know if you'd allow Dr. Nellman to actually come by and give you one of these t-shirts, you can wear it freely whenever you want, they're beautiful. It keeps you safe when you're walking on the street, nobody can say they didn't see you, it actually seems to glow in the dark. But as you know, math is everywhere, and we are trying to ensure that all of our teachers, all of our subjects, all of our staff actually are focusing on math, and so where they can make it applicable, we want our students to see math is something positive, it's something they can do. It's everywhere, and sometimes it's a little challenging, obviously, in some of those higher level math classes, but there's no reason that every one of our students can't be successful and prepared for the workforce. So we really appreciate the good work happening at Hawthorne High School, and certainly working with the South Bay WIB and Jan Vogel and the entire team that is there. And of course, there's a new principal at Hawthorne High School, as I think most of you know, is Dr. Pam Brown, who's also here, will be coming up. She's an amazing individual who has done great work at losing her high school, and now is all the more energized to be at Hawthorne and doing a fantastic job there. So thank you very much for having us here this evening.
Superintendent, thank you so much for the t-shirts, and you know what they say, real men can wear pink, right?
You got it, absolutely. And we are stopped everywhere in the same, why are you wearing that? It's like I get to tell them all about our math, and so it's wonderful, so thank you so much.
I'm going to wear this to work tomorrow, hopefully they don't kick me out.
Mr. Vogel, don't sit down, we're going to read the Certificate of Appreciation, and we're going to call up the students to join you at the podium who received it. This is our certificate of appreciation. The city of Hawthorne is proud to recognize your achievement in graduating on July 26, 2019, from the South Bay Workforce Investment Board's Aeroflex Pre-Aprenticeship Program. As part of the three-track Aeroflex Pre-Aprenticeship Program requirements, you successfully completed and earned certificates for Track One Work Readiness Training, called Blueprint for Workplace Success, Track Two SME Tooling U, Occupational Skills Training, and Track Three Work Experience Training. Your dedication in completing this program has helped gain career knowledge in manufacturing, obtained valuable training and work experience, and helped you on the path to a successful career. Congratulations, it is presented this 24th day of September 2019. So I'd like...
Madam, madam, may I, before you call the students, please? Actually, Dr. O'Brien, I want you to talk a little bit about October 17, where you guys did that partner breakfast, that you showcased all your academies, so can you speak a little bit about that, because that was a tremendous event, that all of us should be there, so please.
Well, we were, and thank you so much for being there and representing the city council. It was on September 17, last Tuesday, we had our community partner breakfast. This is, I think, the third time that we've done it. Each year, it's gotten bigger and better, and it's a place for us to be able to showcase these academies, but it's also a place for us to be able to touch base with all of the business and community partners that are surrounding our area. And they come together, they get to share what we're doing, and then say, hey, how can we be part of that? How can we help the students? As you know, it does take a village in order for us to be successful with students, and we have incredible individuals just looking for that opportunity, and when we can work closely with community and business partners, then we are preparing the students that will have the skills needed for the workforce, they can go out there, be successful, no one needs to look anywhere else other than right here, Sentinel Valley, here in the South Bay, and we've done a great job, and it was just a fantastic event, and as you know, I mean, the people came out, had a great breakfast, but it was more getting to see what the students are doing. Our emcee was actually one of our graduates, who went through one of the academies, and is now out there directing his own films and working in the industry with entertainment. It's just fantastic to have those kind of people. He also dressed in a hot pink t-shirt, and I was like, perfect, you know how to do it. So, but again, thanks so much.
So let me ask you this, did Dr. Morgan have got your pink shoes?
Yes, it's so funny you said that, I do have them on display, actually, in my office, and as I was leaving, my secretary said to me, aren't you going to wear those hot pink shoes that Dr. Morgan purchased for you? She gave them to me, and I said, no, I'm saving those for their board meeting, I said I should have worn them though. Yeah, she got me those, she didn't want me to feel left out, so they'll match my beautiful shirt, I have shoes now that match those, so. Everybody is getting into the theme, and I will add one more thing, as you know, we are not a unified school district, it's a, we have elementary school districts that then feed into the high school district, and we call them partner districts. There are four that work with Sentinel Valley, and we had our first ever joint board meeting on the 20th of March this past year, where together, we actually did a resolution to support math education from kinder all the way through high school. And so this is not something just with Sentinel Valley, it's all of our districts working together, and I will be giving all of those board members a hot pink t-shirt as well. So we want everyone to feel part of what's going on, so again, it's a great effort across the entire city and across the region.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, so I'm going to start calling the students' names. First, Jasmine Aguilar, just come up as I call your name. Jimmy Andrade. Eduardo Barajas. Yeah, maybe you may as well come up.
Your way up through the little gate right there, okay?
Benjamin Bloom. Aaron Chinchilla.
Right up here, guys, right up here?
Leonardo De Alba. Marvin Estevez. Samuel Gomez. Cameron Hartley. Edgar Jimenez. Fernando Martias. Andres Michel. Aaron Ortiz. Juan Placeres. Isaac Quezada. Jimena Rodriguez. Adrian Ruiz. Mark Sastumay. Rajib Sakib. Noah Shelton. Christian Silva. Bahad Tutla. And Brandon Vergilio. Thank you all, please come up all, and I'm going to ask Mr. Vogel and Mr. Chris Kegel, who also worked with this program, to come up and take a photo with us.
The principal, right?
Oh, yes.
To the chair, before all the students leave, actually, we want to recognize the teacher, Dr. Pacheco, right? He's outstanding teacher over there at Manufacturing Engineering, so that's here for her, Dr. Pacheco. Thank you, Mr. Vogel. Thank you, Dr. O'Brien, thank you, Dr. Brown, to bring all these beautiful kids, so we love them, and we see success, so fantastic.
Absolutely, we're the cradle of aerospace here in the city of Hawthorne, and it's great to see science and engineering programs here in our community, starting with our own namesake high school, Hawthorne High School, so let's give it up again for them. Mayor Protem has another presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. So, switching gears, we are going to now have a discussion on the proposed desalination project in El Segundo. We will have a, first, we will have Bruce Resnick, the Executive Director of Los Angeles Waterkeeper, and then we will have a presentation by E.J. Caldwell, the Manager of Water Policy and Government Affairs for West Basin. So first, Mr. Bruce Resnick.
Real quick, where did the bag end up? I want to make sure nobody just snagged it, because I kind of wanted some at the end. All right, awesome, all right, let's go.
I think they're probably all gone by now.
Make sure it comes up here too, okay? If it comes up here too, okay?
Did you really think there were going to be some left?
I don't know, well, yeah. All right. All right, sir. Welcome.
Tassan. My name is Bruce Resnick, I am the Executive Director of Los Angeles Waterkeeper, which is a local environmental watchdog group, working to protect our inland and coastal waterways and promote sustainable local water supplies, and I, Mayor, council members, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak about something I'm very passionate about, which is the promotion of sustainable, low-carbon, local water supplies. I am speaking today on behalf of myself, as well as a coalition of environmental groups called the Smarter Water L.A. Coalition, including Thirder Foundation, Heal the Bay, and also the Environmental Justice Coalition for Water. And I've got about 12 slides to get through, and of course, I left my notes on the printer back at the office, so I'm going to be winging it a little bit, so I'm going to leave you with just the conclusion. We are here to ask this council, when it's properly agendized, to oppose the proposed ocean desalination project that West Basin is putting forward in El Segundo, and the main takeaway, and if there's anything else you remember from this presentation, it is that ocean desalination is the most expensive, the most energy-intensive, therefore, the most climate-impacting, and most environmentally harmful way to create a local water supply. Moreover, there are better alternatives that are not only theoretical, but they are already moving forward in L.A., and that's what I will cover today. So E.J. Caldwell from West Basin is going to go more into who West Basin is, suffice it to say, they're a water district that serves about a million people in L.A. County, they're a wholesaler, and they sell water to 17 cities, including Hawthorne. So you have a very big stake in the kinds of projects that move forward, and Donald Dear is your representative on the West Basin Board, which is a five-member board. The project that they are proposing, and again, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, because I'm expecting Mr. Caldwell to do so, but they are proposing a 20 million gallon a day ocean desalination project. They released a draft environmental impact report last year, and they were planning to release the final in September, which is why we sort of urgently have put, starting to get on agendas. We understand it is delayed, but we expect it to be put forward before the end of the year. Despite what I said earlier about ocean desalination being the most expensive, energy-intensive, environmentally harmful solution, West Basin has been going forward with ocean desal research for a long time, 17-plus years, they have already spent $63 million on pilot projects, environmental studies on the EIR, and the number is probably higher. The ratepayers, the people in this audience, have already paid for this research, and we are hoping that the money does not actually continue to be spent on a project that really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So I just have a few slides, this is on the energy intensity of desal, whatever else, I don't think Mr. Caldwell is going to dispute, I don't think anything that I have in my presentation. This is a report that was put together by the Pacific Institute, they're sort of the leading think tank, and it shows that ocean desalination, which is the top bar, is by far the most energy-intensive way to create local water. It actually requires more energy than our current most energy-intensive water supply option, which is pumping water through the state water project from the delta over the Tejachapi, which is a massive energy drain. Desal, ocean desal is actually more energy-intensive than that, is the only way we can create local water that actually increases our carbon footprint. We estimate that this plant is going to contribute over 40,000 metric tons of carbon into the atmosphere every year, from the energy required to run it. That means it's about the equivalent of 18,000 households are basically putting between half and two-thirds of another Hawthorne on the grid unnecessarily. Hawthorne has been a leader, you are part of the Clean Power Alliance, you've been a leader on energy, this goes in exactly the wrong direction, and, you know, frankly, at a time when we're seeing Houston going underwater because of a hurricane, we're still seeing the Bahamas devastated, Puerto Rico is still recovering, we are still recovering from drought and wildfires, we are at the climate tipping point, and it is actually kind of fitting, I'm speaking after students, because hopefully, you all saw the climate strike a couple days ago when students leaving, because they're the ones who are going to be most impacted. Hopefully, some of you saw Greta Thunberg's comments, blistering comments at the U.N. At this point, and I've tried to be nice in a lot of my testimony, I'm kind of a little done with that, it is incomprehensible that we would be looking for a business-as-usual solution that is actually going to increase our carbon footprint and increase the impacts of climate change on our planet. It's also the most expensive energy option we've got. This is another slide by Pacific Institute, but it corresponds to the ocean desal project in Carlsbad, where the numbers actually there are going up, but it's $2,100 an acre foot, that's more than any of these other options, water recycling, everything else on here, all of which are, by the way, available to West Basin and mostly moving forward. And your ratepayers, again, are going to be paying for this on top of all the other better things that are happening on water. Now, we don't know what this project is going to cost, it's not part of the EIR process, we expect it to be, you know, $500 or $600 million. West Basin doesn't know how they're going to pay for it. I think they're still paying off their recycled water project, which we support, at C. Little, at our C. Little facility, so to take on another half a billion-dollar obligation when better options are out there, just doesn't make a lot of sense. And I am a coastal group, I really focus heavily on the climate and cost impact, especially because of the environmental justice angle, but I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the ocean impacts as well, and that comes in the form of brine and other discharges, metals and other toxins that get concentrated in the outfall and often fall to the bottom of the ocean, the intake of fish and larvae through impingement and entrament, as a matter of fact, we phased out cooling plants, power plants that's used once through cooling, because we know that there's only about 50% of the fish left in the ocean from 1970, and intakes were a big cause of why fish populations died off, now we're proposing to replace them with ocean desal. Now, here's a slide that is actually one of my favorites, because I think I'm a nerd, but that's okay. We don't need this plant. So this is actually from West Basin, this is their urban water management plan, and the two left slides are the... And the two left slides are their actual water use from 2008, 2010. And you can see with the drought, the number's going down. Well, they miraculously expected, starting 2015, the numbers to go back up, demand to go back up, which is what justifies their need for their desalination, which is the green bar there. Well, their numbers stayed down. And they stayed down because of places like Hawthorne, which has reduced its water and kept it down at about 69 gallons per person per day. And so, what we see, the actual, is exactly the trend line you'd expect. And if you look at the difference between the actual number, which is that red bar, and what they're projecting, which is the top of the yellow because blue is conservation, which we'd like to see a lot more of, it's exactly the size of desal. They've actually conserved within the West Basin region. They've conserved themselves, and you guys should be proud of this as another leader, conserve yourself out of the need to spend $600 million on ocean desalination. As I mentioned, it's not only the fact that this project is so expensive and so energy-intensive, and you've eliminated the need for it by conservation, but there's a whole lot of better options out there, and these are already underway. And we call it the Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, Restore approach. Reduce water waste through conservation, I've already mentioned. You guys have done a great job of that, and other places in West Basin have too, although there's still a lot more to do because, while you guys are 69 gallons per person per day, there are places within West Basin's territory that are two to three times that. And they can do a lot better when you're talking about the Malibu's and the PV area. Reuse stormwater. L.A. Waterkeeper was a leader in fighting for Measure W, the Safe Clean Water Measure, the partial tax to do green infrastructure for stormwater capture, which has tremendous benefits. Not only is it capturing our stormwater, reusing it, recharging our aquifers, but it does it through green infrastructure that makes our communities greener, healthier, improves air quality, reduces flood risk, benefits climate impact, reduces heat island effect. And these are true multi-benefit, community benefit projects. Recycling of wastewater. Now, West Basin has been a leader. They recycle about 35, 40 million gallons a day in partnership with the City of L.A. from Hyperion through the Edward C. Little Plan. And they actually have an agreement, or, well, an MOU with the city to explore doubling that to 70. But when the plant was envisioned, it was actually envisioned as a 100-million-gallon-a-day plant. And if you saw, Mayor Garcetti's already said, the city plans to recycle 100% of its wastewater. West Basin should be trying to get every drop of that recycled wastewater. They already have a partnership, and that would be about 180 million gallons a day total. And so, we should be working to maximize the recycling at Edward C. Little. And that's not only the only recycling project. The Joint Water Pollution Control Plant in Carson is doing a pilot project to recycle 150 million gallons a day. And that water can go right back into the west coast basin where West Basin gets a lot of its water from. And that is moving ahead. There's actually groundbreaking. I'm going to be at it in a week or two. And lastly, we have contaminated groundwater in this region, including in the west coast basin. Some of it is from salt intrusion, but it's a lot less saltier than ocean water. You can do brackish desal, which is a fraction of the energy and cost. And I point this out because a lot of times enviros get a rap, a bad rap, and sometimes deservedly so, for always being the group against. Because we get up here and say, we're against this. We are for all these other alternatives, and we've advocated for all these other alternatives and worked our tail off, and we're afraid these can be undone by poor investments. And the last thing I would say with all these options, from conservation and efficiency and stormwater capture and reuse and wastewater recycling, groundwater cleanup, they have a few things in common. Every single one of them is cheaper than ocean desal. Every single one of them is more climate-friendly, less energy-intensive, more environmentally-friendly, more multi-benefit. And not a single one was examined in this EIR. It also, the EIR also fails to look at impacts on frontline communities, the communities already most impacted by pollution. Rate increases, we know are going to hit these communities more. We know that the carbon and the climate impacts that we see always hit frontline communities more. We are essentially allowing communities like PV in Malibu building a plan to subsidize, or basically allowing frontline communities to subsidize the creation of water for communities that are not doing their fair share in conservation. And I have to point out, in an EIR that was over 1,000 pages and multiple attachments and other reports, there was a four-page environmental justice analysis. It's actually included in a packet, which I have printed out, so, but we emailed as well. Three and a half pages were a recitation of the demographic information in Hawthorne and in El Segundo where physical infrastructure is going to be. The actual analysis was less than half a page in a 1,000-page document. That is just simply not acceptable today. And that is why you are seeing a growing chorus of opposition to this project. We have dozens of environmental groups, climate groups, environmental justice groups, tribal groups, public health groups, green businesses that are all standing up and saying, no, this project does not make sense. Maybe we need ocean desal at one point, but only after we've invested more heavily into these other solutions. And it's not only environmental groups and NGOs and tribal groups and green businesses. A lot of cities and agencies are expressing concern. Some have outright opposed the project, some of the customers. Others have just expressed their significant concern. So, the last thing that I want to leave you with is, going first is always hard. But I've had enough presentations with West Basin. I know a few of the things they're going to say. One is they're going to, you know, show what a leader they've been on recycled water, and that's great. They have been, and they should be applauded. But they've actually been lagging since they started their leadership decades ago. Orange County has passed them. San Diego is on the verge, L.A., the sanitation districts of L.A. County. We want West Basin to go back to being a leader on recycled water. But even recognizing their leadership, that does not give them a blank check to move forward with a dumb project now. The second thing you're going to hear is, wait, the final EIR isn't even out yet. And that's true. There's a few problems with that, though. One is, from when that final EIR comes out, they can actually certify the EIR and move forward with the project as soon as 15 days after. They've said they would give longer than that, but there is no legal requirement for that. And they also have told me that they're not planning to do a big rollout and workshops like they do with the draft. So, it's uncertain how much of a meaningful say anybody's going to have if you wait and they move forward fairly quickly. And lastly, on that point is, no matter what they do on the final EIR, and they're saying, well, we're going to, they said this, we're going to fix all that with the EJ and the climate analysis and all that environmental justice and climate. They've had 17 years and $63 million to move this project forward the right way. I don't know what they think they're going to do to correct it in the next couple months, this lack of analysis, and nothing in the final EIR is going to change the fact that I started with. This is the most expensive, energy-intensive, and environmentally harmful solution. And the last thing that you'll hear them say is, well, because of climate change, we need a local water supply. And I could not agree more, again, going back to Reduce, Reuse, Recycle, Restore. I cannot agree more that we need a local water supply. But if we think we are going to fix our problem needing local water supply by creating new problems and exacerbating climate change and environmental justice impacts and environmental impacts, that is just absolutely the wrong way to go. So, thank you very much for your time this evening. And we, like I said, on behalf of the Smarter Water L.A. Coalition, we would ask that this be agendized and this project be opposed. Thank you.
So, just like you said, after he finishes his presentation, I'm going to give you one-minute rebuttal. No, I am.
Okay.
You say it's not, we want to make this fair.
Appreciate it.
And then, after he, after he finishes, after you finish, he'll give a one-minute rebuttal.
Okay, excellent.
But I'm not going to do, I have some questions and concerns. And there's people up here who appreciate methodology and evidence. So, you say that there's energy. Where's the in-depth report? I haven't seen the report. Is there an further in-depth report that you can give us? Using, telling us who your, if you guys, what your methodology is, your calculations, or who your references are?
Absolutely.
And then, one other, okay, you'll provide that to me, or to us?
Yep.
Then, you talked about Reduce, Reuse, Recycle.
And Restore.
Yeah, the different, stormwater, wastewater, groundwater, and Reduce. Who's to say that when you reduce and you're hoping that people will be disciplined enough to be able to conserve? That's wishful thinking, especially in a growing population. So, then, the other one, Reuse, the stormwater, recycle the wastewater, restore the groundwater. You have to collect that stuff. Is there existing infrastructure? Maybe it doesn't. Maybe that's going to cost a lot. Increasing energy costs when it comes to process the water. We already have some things that are increasing with regards to energy for us as a city. So, think about that, and while him, I'm not, I'm going to ask him some questions, too. That applies to him. If he's just, if you're going to tell us, oh, it's bad, and it's good, and I don't see any evidence as to why, what your calculations are. I mean, you know, there's people up here who are educated enough and people in the audience that want to see a little bit further in depth. That goes for the gentleman from West Basin. So, let's give him an opportunity.
You want me to answer you, or do you want me to have him talk first so then?
Uh, that applies to the other gentleman as well. And he needs to be able to see why, tell us why those other four options are not viable and why they haven't tried it. So, I want to hear that, too. So, at the end, I'll let you respond to that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, please.
Him, and then I'll respond later.
Yes, no, I really appreciate it. Don't go away.
I will not.
Okay, but, so, if you just think about what I asked you, this applies to the gentleman. If he doesn't cover it, then I'm going to get on him. All right, go ahead.
No, I hope you can all hear me. I did hand out hard copies of the presentation that I'll be giving. And let me close out of this.
So, this is an important item, so I think we're going to be, have an extra couple minutes? Well, actually, it's the second presentation, so he's with them.
Yes.
Then I'll just add the extra couple of minutes for rebuttals and stuff.
I'll try to be brief, and, well, let me begin by saying, good evening, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protem Valentine, and members of the council. It is an honor to be here on behalf of West Basin Municipal Water District and our Board of Directors. As was mentioned, my name is EJ Caldwell, and I do manage the Water Policy Division at West Basin Municipal Water District. And we have prepared some slides for you today, a quick overview of the district, although I know that Bruce has provided a little glimpse of that. I did want to touch on a quick look at the region's water supply because you cannot analyze the decision that our board will ultimately have to make without a true, deep understanding of our water supply. And finally, I'd like to talk or provide a summary of West Basin's ocean water desalination research and the environmental impact report. But I will, as Bruce mentioned, I will address several of his comments. And while I don't disagree with all of his presentation, I will point out some areas where I think that further consideration should be made. So, to begin with, West Basin's municipal, West Basin Municipal Water District's mission is to provide a safe and reliable supply of high-quality water to serve the communities, or to supply of high-quality water to the communities that we serve, including the city of Hawthorne. And one area in which Mr. Resnick's presentation fails to really focus is on potable drinking water supplies. And I'll kind of echo that throughout my presentation because he highlights several different types of water supply and several different types of projects. But we cannot drink half of the supplies he has on his charts. So, I'm going to focus on potable drinking water supplies. As was mentioned by Bruce, West Basin Municipal Water District does have a very diverse service area. And when I talk about diverse, I talk about the diversity of water usage. Again, something that needs to be focused on. Our, our service area goes as far north up into Malibu and all the way down south into the Pacificus Peninsula. But we do have the highly dense beach cities, as well as inland, including West Hollywood and the city of Carson. When we talk about West Basin's mission, we need to analyze water supply for the regions that we serve. So, we need to take the specific water usage in each of those communities to heart and push forward as far as achieving our mission. As Bruce mentioned, you look at the creation of West Basin Municipal Water District in 1947, and we were 100% reliant on groundwater. And he highlights that as a possible solution, groundwater. You look at and compare it to 1990, we had overdrafted our groundwater to the point where it was no longer viable. And that is why West Basin Municipal Water District joined the Metropolitan Water District to provide imported drinking water supplies. So, you can see that in 1990, we were 80% reliant on our imported water supplies. And again, when I mentioned this, and this is clear in Bruce's presentation, we have our local groundwater supplies, I mentioned, that's 20%. You have your Colorado River Aqueduct, and you have your California Aqueduct. A lot of you have heard a great deal of discussions from our state legislature, the current governor and past governor, about what we're going to do about our imported water supply. And this relates specifically to the Bay Delta region and our ability to move water from northern California to southern California in a way that we can provide that water. And I know that Mr. Resnick has provided a comparison of what it takes energy-wise to pump it over the Tehachapi's. But we have those, those are fixed costs to bring the water over the Tehachapi's. What we need to do is ensure that that water supply is available. So, this slide depicts a little bit of what our challenges are. You do have climate change impacts, which include long-term droughts along the Colorado River. The Colorado River is over-prescribed when you look at the fact that it provides water to seven states, include, or as well as the country of Mexico. We cannot rely on that supply of water when you, when you take a look at that and you look at how we're going to manage to provide water to seven states. And as I look at the state, again, a lot of you have had the opportunity to visit up north and see the state water project and drive along the levees and see exactly what it takes to move water down here. And California has done an excellent job of investigating potential fixes to California's long-term water solutions. They had a proposed project, the dual tunnels underneath the delta estuary to provide water there. And of course, Mr. Resnick points that he wants to reduce our demand on imported water, but he opposed that project. And when that project has been reconfigured to in fact be one tunnel, so, reduced size and reduced capacity of that project, his coalition has opposed that project. So, when we talk about potable water supplies and you look at those, so, go back one slide, and you look at groundwater is depleted, you have your Colorado River, which is over-prescribed as far as seven states. And now, you have the California Aqueduct. He opposes that. And that's a challenge for water professionals. That's the challenge for a water agency like West Basin that has that mission to provide a safe and reliable and affordable drinking water supply to the communities we serve. So, this is a look at where we are now. You can see on the right-hand side, 55% of imported water. That 16% is the conservation that Mr. Resnick has pointed out. Our groundwater does stagnate around 19% to 20%, but that is being met by the Edward C. Little Water Recycling Facility by recharging the aquifer. So, without that water recycling facility, we would not be able to recharge our aquifer and continue to use that groundwater supply. So, West Basin does have a plan to move forward and look and identify potential solutions to our water supply crisis. We call this our Water for Tomorrow program. You've been familiar in the past with our Water Reliability 2020 program. But this has been, as Bruce mentioned, a long look at potential water supplies. And so, we'd like to talk about that. And again, the plan, if you look at the original slide of 80% imported water going down to 55% by our current water usage, our plan is to reduce that by 39%. And while I don't want to disagree with too much of what Bruce's PowerPoint did say, I did actually bring our water supply chart, and I noticed he had a little red line that says, this is our current demand. And I think, Mr. Mayor, you wisely pointed out that the city of Hawthorne is doing an excellent job of water conservation and utilizing technologies and reducing our demand. And that's the concern that we have. We project out to grow our water use efficiency and our conservation. We are not projecting to stay stagnant. But when you look at water usage, it goes up and down based off of hydrology and our precipitation. When there are rainy days, people don't water their lawns, so our water demand actually goes down here in southern California. When we're in severe drought and the governor demands a 20% reduction, outlaws watering lawns and outlaws using your water outdoors, you do see a steep drop in water usage. But our natural inclination is to continue to use water. People want their communities to be beautiful. And that's where West Basin Municipal Water District has invested in all of our communities to help them reduce, to remove turf. We have a $3 turf rebate program to help families reduce their irrigable turf in their yards. Cities to do the same, churches and school districts. So, we're working extremely hard. But what we are here to discuss today is that 11% of ocean water desalination as a potential. And again, if you look at that 11%, you tack that on to the imported water. We're growing our water recycling. We're growing our water use efficiency. But identifying potable sources is what's crucial in our decision-making process. And it's crucial as far as what we invest our money and our time into. So, what is ocean water desalination? Desalination is the process of removing salt from water. Desalination is the process of removing salt from water using reverse osmosis. This technology is the same that we utilize at the Edward C. Little Water Recycling Facility. It's the same as Mr. Resnick pointed out when we talk about brackish desalination. It's the same that's used in cruise ships. It's the same that's used in Santa Barbara, San Diego, Catalina, internationally in Spain, Australia, and Israel. So this technology is a proven technology. When you look at the process, I wanted to focus on three different areas. Seawater intake, our reverse osmosis, which is the energy intensiveness that he brought up. And of course, our seawater concentrate, our outlet. Though as Mr. Resnick pointed out, West Basin has been going about this for some time. And what I want to point out, because we can talk about all the studies that we've done and our pilot program and our demonstration program, and now the EIR, is West Basin's effort to work with the city of Hawthorne throughout that process. As early as 2009, we came to you with a program called "It's Time to Get Serious About Water Use Efficiency and Conservation" and the development of local water resources. And the city of Hawthorne listened to that presentation and adopted a resolution in support. When we came to you with our Water Reliability 2020 program to identify potential resources, the city of Hawthorne again joined us in support of that. And when we briefed individuals on potential desalination projects, again, we've received tremendous outpouring of support. And so I point that only for the sake of saying, we are trying to be as transparent as possible. And we will continue to do that throughout this process and ultimately to that decision if and when it's made. So the EIR, as Mr. Resnick has pointed out, has been a great deal of effort. It has taken some time. This is just an air, a look at the 18 studies and analysis that we've conducted as part of that EIR. The specific questions and interrogatories, if you will, when it comes to the EIR process has been focused on several different key issues. And one, of course, is the screen intake. And because of time, this does include a video, I could show it. But if you look to the right-hand side, you see the wedge wire screens. And of course, what we're trying to do is protect 100% of juvenile and adult sea life. We do protect the larva, which is another one of those concerns. But we have invested in this research and demonstrated that at the demonstration facility. We have conducted a great deal of study on the brine discharge, again, looking at what's been done in Australia and noticing that the marine life has grown and, and actually thrived in those conditions. We have looked at the energy intensiveness. This is just one of the recovery devices that we plan to utilize. But we do intend to look at renewables and solar and windmills and investments to offset the usage for any potential facility. And then this is something that I really wanted to highlight because as Mr. Resnick pointed out, we, the EIR process has been extensive. The original notice of preparation began in 2015. As Mr. Resnick pointed out, we had several individual working groups with the NGO community. We've had plenty of presentations for all of our cities. When we move forward, the draft EIR was released on March 27th of 2018. We held two public hearings in the city of El Segundo where the potential facility would be. We did 91 days. They asked us for an extended comment period. And we did that, we did it to 91 days, which has caused some of the delays because we are answering every single question that we received as part of that process. And now we are at the final EIR.
Mr. Caldwell, you have two more minutes.
Perfect. We're now at the final EIR. You can find the information at the West Basin Municipal Water District website. We are excited to bring this out, to work with Mr. Resnick, to work with his coalition. But again, when his slides depict the costs and the energy intensiveness of programs that are not drinkable, they are not potable. You cannot drink stormwater. I would challenge him on the cost of stormwater if you look at potential projects in the coastal areas like the city of Santa Monica. But what we are talking about right now is potentially fixing our imported water supplies, reducing our demand on those, and finding and identifying potential potable resources that are developed locally and are drought resilient. So with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have, and I'll be happy to segue to Mr. Resnick.
We just need to be fair and we need to move along also, but I'll give you one minute rebuttal and you one minute rebuttal. And then we'll have comments from our council members, if there's anything. Go ahead, sir.
Fair enough, and I welcome the opportunity for meeting individually with anybody. I have handouts that we emailed that have some of the studies that I'll get to you. All the sources I talked about are potable. You can recapture stormwater and treat it and filter it into groundwater. Recycled water can be put into groundwater indirect potable reuse. It is not yet direct potable reuse, but there's legislation and regulations happening on that. In terms of the alternatives, everything I said is already happening. Yes, conservation has happened and you said you were worried, you know, water use could go up. We've done a good job, but worldwide, most places are still far better than we are in LA and California, so there's still more to do. We are already going to be paying for Measure W stormwater capture. Is that my time up?
No, keep going. You have 30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay, sorry, I couldn't read it. So there is already going to be $300 million a year invested in green infrastructure because of the county's Safe Clean Water Program. That is to create local drinking water supplies. And even if you're using it for irrigation, you're offsetting the need for drinking water to be used for that. So you are creating a drinking water source. Recycled water, between the city's plan and the Joint Water Pollution Control Plan, it's 330 million gallons a day of recycled water. And all of these are going to be impacting ratepayers in Hawthorne and the other 17 cities. So adding another $600 million project. The last thing I will say with time is, the one thing that Mr. Caldwell did not dispute is that it is the most energy-intensive, expensive, and environmentally harmful way to create local water supplies.
Thank you. Mr. Caldwell, your rebuttal. Guys running for president or something? No, go ahead. Let me reset this. Go ahead.
I will actually refute that, and I do want to point out that when you talk about stormwater in this area, in the coastal area, it is not reusable. It is, if you go in the San Gabriel mountain area and you look at spreading grounds where water will percolate. But here in the South Bay, you actually have to inject that water and you have to treat it to a point where you, you can inject it. Secondly, when you talk about his recycled water, West Basin is already doing that and is a champion of it. We actually have a contract with the Water Repunishment District. We sell the water to them and the county injects it. We can't inject any more water than the county will allow us and we already serve them the maximum amount that they will take. As much recycled water as they want to put in that ground, they are doing that at this time. And I'll be happy to meet with you and provide you with that documentation.
Alright, thank you. Comments from our council members? Let's just, go for it. Councilmember Mike Daya.
Yeah, you know, it's really good to listen to two very smart people, you know, talking about the same subject and you couldn't be farther apart. You know, particularly about the environment. Plastic is doing more damage to the ocean and animals than anybody out there as far as I can tell from what I've been able to, to see. So I'm not quite sure what damage that desalination is going to, you know, how, how damaging is that really to the environment? The other thing is that, what's wrong with the technology? What's wrong with creating the technology? I mean, that's been around for a long time, but only recently has it been economically feasible to be able to do that. Is that continuing to improve?
It will always continue to improve. And when you look at West Basin's water recycling efforts, if you look at the facility that was originally constructed and what it looks like today, it's complete opposites. The, the technology has advanced at a rate that we're actually changing out trains of membranes because the membranes are completely new. And they're far more energy efficient than they were when we installed them. And they can produce more water and last longer. So the costs are actually drastically being reduced in our recycled water. And we expect that the technology will continue to improve when it comes to ocean water desalination.
In a, in a really easy, you know, lay the hay down loaves where the cows can reach it type thing, how does this hurt the environment? Because I didn't really get that.
Well, first of all, it sucks in marine life. And so in California, we've actually phased out power plants that use once-through cooling. Because when you're, so if you create 20 million gallons, you're sucking in 40 very quickly. In the ocean, we've lost, even before plastics became an issue, we lost 50% of fish in the ocean. The ocean is on the verge of collapse, as much as we talk about climate. And a lot of that has to do with the sucking in of wildlife through power plants, which we've gotten rid of.
You got cruise ships out there dumping their trash right out in the ocean. And nobody's doing anything about that. They're plastic, they're everything.
Right, but just because one source of pollution, intakes from impingement and entrainment of wildlife is a major source of impact to coastal areas, particularly in those areas. And this plant is actually not too far from two marine-protected areas that are, that are actually critically important for wildlife. The other thing though, and this is what I talk more about, obviously, cost is one thing, but the biggest impact it has is how energy-intensive. When you are adding to the grid, that energy needs to be created. And when that energy is created, it has a carbon footprint. And even as much as they're trying to do solar, they're talking about going carbon-neutral, comparing it to the delta of if you import, if we reduce our imports by 20 million gallons, we're not going to reduce our imports by 20 million.
Southern California is basically a desert. You know, I mean, I mean, this is what we are. We, we got to bring in water from everywhere. And, and to create a source of water from the ocean is, makes a little bit of sense because there's an awful lot of water in the ocean. And if you can solve some of the issues that everybody's concerned about, the environment and certainly the cost, obviously, they're already doing it if they think that they could do it cheaply enough. So it seems that some of the other areas that they need to work on is, okay, the, the, the carbon footprint and improve on that and, but you're gonna, you need.
Please watch Greta Thunberg's comments. We, we can't, we can't keep adding to the carbon.
You need to create technology that will provide for the future for things that are crucial.
And that same technology is used for recycled water, but the fundamental problem isn't the technology getting salt out of water forces you to push water very, very fast through membranes, which is very, very, very energy-intensive, which means it's a high-carbon footprint and it's that energy that is more and more expensive. So the thing is, there are better options. We discharge 100 billion gallons a day of runoff that we could be reclaiming. We discharge 500 million gallons of wastewater of the ocean.
You want them to stop the technology.
I just don't want them to build a project.
You don't want any, you know, you want the technology to stop. You don't want them to use that at all, you know.
Not if it's going to add to climate change.
Not if it's going to act to climate change.
And, and impact our oceans and impact every ratepayer in this room.
Okay, well, no, that's a position and I respect your position, you know.
Okay, so now we'll move on. Everybody gets an opportunity to say something if you feel like. So now we finish with Councilmember Mike Daya? You're good?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I just had a question. Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Resnick said that the, the fish would be damaged by the, by the process that you use for desalination. Would you describe the screening process that you use to protect the fish?
So I know that time is very important to all of you, and so I won't go through it. But there is a video that we have included in here. We've actually installed camera equipment on these wedge wire screens. What those wedge wire screens do is that slows the volume of water through those screens to the point where fish are swimming by unencumbered, no problem, no impingement, no entrainment. The question of this open ocean intake actually does sound pretty scary. If I was to think that we were sending a large pipeline into the ocean and sucking ocean water in with no protection, I would be concerned too. But that is not West Basin's approach at all.
Thank you.
Alright, so now, Councilmember Montero?
Yeah, to Mr. Caldwell, what about, explain to me, in a precise the solar, where are you going to get your other power?
So obviously, our power would come from the grid. But the question is, is how you can generate electricity through the process of pushing that saltwater through the membranes. You can actually generate electricity in that process. And we demonstrated that at the demonstration facility in Redondo Beach when we had it. But just like any other business, when you start to look at how to conduct a project and do it in an environmentally sensitive way, you're looking to offset some of the energy you're using. So investments in wind technology and investments in solar technology have proven to be very helpful. And one example would be at the Edward C. Little Water Recycling Facility where we invested in solar technology. People said that there was no way we'd be able to generate that much electricity from solar that close to the coastline. And we were able to do far more than the 10% that we thought and really drastically reduce our energy usage there at that facility.
So let me ask you a policy question. Are you guys going, intend to buy more energy from, say, Edison or the Clean Power Alliance?
So that is one area that the Environmental Impact Report explores. As you go through the permitting process, and that's one thing that, that I should let you know, that that 15-day certification process on the EIR by no means, no means, means that our board would move forward on a project. The permitting process for a project like this are years. And so not taking a position at this time, I will let you know, West Basin will come back to you and talk to you about the energy usage. But there's several different concepts of working with. The facility as proposed would be co-located with a power facility. So there are potentials for in-house or in-fence power. But other than that, taking it off the local grid and offsetting it in California.
So let me say, yeah, I have saw the video because I went to one of your workshops. So I know how the desalination process is going to take place and how to protect the fish and the biology and marine biology. Actually, you know, I was born in an island that was semi-desert. And we kind of like have a water desalination plan since 1970. And it has not harmed the marine biology over there on those islands. So caved earth islands that worked with the Israelis a long time ago to build those plants. So I go there every two years, so the plant's still working. So it, it is an alternative source of fresh water that we need. Like you say, you know, portable water is going to be decreased from Colorado River and from the Bay Delta. So we know we have to get some alternative water, so. But I understand the, about the environment and the, the carbon footprint. But if, if you guys can come up with a good idea how to, you know, take energy from the clean power sources, right, from the solar panels, the wind, the turmoil, so it will be better than just regular power. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Haderwatt?
Question. I remember you mentioning the same technologies used in Israel and Australia, correct? I think for the renewable energy part, Southern Australia created their own electric grid using solar panels and I believe it was the, I forgot what program they call it, the Horseman Power Pack or something like that where they were working with Tesla. Would that be something that this plant would also be looking into too when it comes to renewable energy or?
Yes, and that, that goes back to the original discussion that technology advances year to year. And it's really hard for us to see where it's going to be. What we do know is that we have depleting water resources. So looking at that and knowing that, that our future is bright when it comes to these different technologies. Obviously, they, Australia has done an excellent job of utilizing the best technologies to protect the marine environment and to decrease their energy consumption. So all of that is wrapped up into our, our look in the EIR as well as our studies that we've conducted in El Segundo and Redondo. But we do expect that technology is, is going to vastly improve, especially when it comes to battery technology.
Yeah, that was one thing I found interesting when studying Southern Australia is they kind of took the same concept was using those renewable energy sources because of how much energy it does take to clean out salt from the water. Setting up that grid really allowed them to ease the pressure off the grid at the same time supply these plants with, with energy. At the same time, trying to make the whole concept green. But it is a fine balance, as you mentioned, as, you know, protecting the environment at the same time trying to create more water for, you know, us to drink. With the permitting process, you mentioned that it's still years away from, from starting or even the, the process of getting any kind of permits?
Correct. The certification of an EIR, I understand wanting this to be an urgent matter. But it should, urgency should never take over the, the fact-finding and the studies. The EIR process, once it's certified, that's a legal process through SEQA. And so once our board reviews the, the document and certifies it, that will in no way stop the city of Hawthorne from weighing in on a potential project in the future as well as the individual council members. So there will be a great deal of further discussion once the EIR is released, if and when the board decides to certify that EIR and if and when they decide to move forward with the project. and if and when they decide to move forward with the project.
This is all preliminary in the meantime. Okay. That was the only question I had?
All right.
Yeah, I just have one more question. Thank you. So, Mr. Caldwell, were there less expensive alternatives that you looked at that were considered? And if so, why did they not went out? As, in, instead of desalination?
So ultimately, West Basin Municipal Water District, as I mentioned, our mission. And I always go back to that. I'm an employee there, but our board has been elected to achieve that mission. And ultimately, it comes down to what is in our control. West Basin is not a groundwater pumping agency. We cannot pump additional groundwater supplies, as Mr. Resnick has pointed out. We need to supply our service area with enough water. We do produce recycled water that goes in the ground. So we are looking at that. We cannot, we have no jurisdiction to force or mandate conservation. So we utilize education and our tours to really educate the public in order for them to do what is right. And we feel like everybody's doing a pretty good job. When it comes to stormwater, and Mr. Resnick and I can discuss it outside and we can debate it a little bit, but the cost of stormwater for potable use in our area is astronomical. And we can discuss the cost of that. But ultimately, it comes down to providing our service area with a potable supply of water at a safe and reliable and affordable means to our communities.
Okay, I guess last comment's on my end. What I see here is, I mean, I'll be more straightforward. And excuse me if it offends anybody, but we have, we have a group here that services our area. And we're being asked by somebody that we really don't know, and it's going to come and ask us to oppose something that, you know, one of our agencies is doing. So the, so the weight of the, the weight is on the person who's coming and asking us to oppose something they're doing. So I see two things. One is a subjective argument, and another one is objective. This is bad because of this, this, this. I'm not seeing any facts. If your group is trying to oppose this, I would expect to see charts comparing the energy, separate chart, the energy differences between desalinization and those four other components, the recuperation of stormwater, groundwater, and whatever the, and I'm not seeing this in your argument. Then also the energy, well, I said the energy costs. We'll graph on that, showing why it's worse and the costs and the energy. But then you're also making the assumption that all energy that you're using is, increases the carbon footprint. Maybe some of it is renewable energy. So we can't say that with the fact that it's all going to be dirty energy that we're going to be using. So the group here that we have that's already working is already giving us an argument based on the depleted work, water sources that they have and the need for it. So there's also a possibility that maybe this first year's worth or this first couple of years is going to be the upfront cost to get like a desalinization plant work rolling along. That's, that's on them to prove that that's what it is. If it's not, then it gives you more credence to what you're telling me. So I'm, all I'm saying is I'm open to hearing what your argument is. You need a lot more information to convince some people. Not everybody's going to be looking at this objectively. People want to see facts and stuff. That's when our city manager gives us an argument for something. He gives us in-depth tables, graphs, et cetera, to prove something. So if you want to come back to us and give us a further argument, I would be open to that. And then you on your end, sir, you need to give us some more information based on what we're saying, our concerns as well. So I don't have enough information to really make, pass judgment on this, but I'm open to listening. Okay, so we're going to, thank you very much for being here and taking time out of your day.
Through the chair, if I may, just add one point here. That, you know, in City of Hawthorne, we are proud. Your Public Works Department has always taken energy efficiency and water conservation measures, working in coalition with West Basin Water District. And also in every capital improvement projects that we perform, we always add water conservation to it. We installed more infiltration chambers in Hawthorne than any other city in South Bay. Hawthorne Boulevard that you are driving from Rose Carens Avenue all the way to 120th Street, that entire center island, 50 feet below it, we have covered it with infiltration chambers that actually recharges groundwater. So we do percolation tests. Yes, we have adobe soil in South Bay in our region. It's clay. But wherever we perform percolation tests and it responds and it is positive, we install infiltration chambers. So the debate that we saw today, your Public Works Department has always viewed it as a family debate. We are a family. It is not two, you know, opposing, you know, enemies. We are trying to save the environment in this beautiful country, God-given land. And we want to also perform technology more advanced. So the work that water keepers do make West Basin to make more improvement in their technology and advance their technology. So this is how we see it. It's a family work. So, and as a civil engineer, I have always been for environment. So we do improvement projects together. You know, we are being conscious and also take conscientious measures for energy efficiency, whether it is for electricity, conserving, you know, LEDs, solar panels, or water conservation projects. So kudos to both of you. We appreciate both of you. So if council join me and applaud both of them.
Yes, absolutely, 100%. Can you guys shake hands? And then we'll feel much better. Shake hands and we'll feel much better. All right, okay, well, there we go, yeah. Now, thank you for lighting a fire under West Basin and for your work you do. Hawthorne is a leader when it comes to energy conservation, water conservation.
My presentation on both.
All right, thank you.
And the Clean Power Alliance.
There we are. Mr. Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Sure. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer your remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report, and recommendation.
Arlene Romero, Sociedad Jose Martí.
Well, we're here on a much lighter note.
Always talk about water. Want to go to the restroom?
Good evening, honorable members of the city council staff and residents. My name is Arlene Romero, and I'm the president of the Sociedad Jose Martí, a Cuban-American culture center in our city. I am here tonight together with ex-presidents Manuel Balboa, Francisco Bilbao, Roberto Bilbao, and community liaison, Erminia Balboa. And we're here to express our heartfelt appreciation for your sponsorship and contribution to our annual Cuban festival. Thank you to those who shared with us in person and those who we know were there in spirit. Our 50th anniversary celebration was fantastic. We would like to recognize the extraordinary support of the entire council, Mayor Vargas, Mayor Protan Valentine, council members Montero, Awad, and Tayeda. We'd like to also express our thanks to our remarkable city manager, Arne Schardbird. Thanks to our city, did I say it correctly?
No, you got it.
Yes?
You got it.
Oh, okay.
He laughs at anything, don't worry.
Sorry, I'm a teacher, so I take it heartfelt if I don't say it correctly. Thanks to our city attorney, Miyahira, city clerk, Dr. Jimenez, city treasurer Patterson, chief of police, Itchy, the police department, public works department, Parks and Rec director, Norris, and his staff, as well as the entire city hall staff. Thank you to our long list of supportive members of the community, volunteers, as well as our generous corporate and business sponsors. All were extremely important to the amazing success of our festival. We also thank the fantastic participation of the Hawthorne residents and the many people from near and far who attended the event. It was our best one yet. Looking to the future, we plan to continue sharing our culture, food, music, and traditions with our beloved adopted country here in Hawthorne, the wonderful city of good neighbors. Our eternal gratitude to all, and we hope to see you at the festival next year. Thank you.
Muchas gracias, thank you very much.
See you next year.
That's right, that's right. I'm glad you guys are back on track for having it every single year. There was a couple of years or maybe one, for whatever reason, but we're glad to see that you guys are on track. Lucy Ravitch?
Hi, I'm Lucy Ravitch. Two weeks ago, I came, and I just wanted to reiterate, I have a vacation rental that I rent out one of the units of my triplex. And about a month ago, I received a letter stating that it came to the city planning department's attention that I had been issued this business license, which I've had for five years. And now I need to, I won't be able to renew the license and business needs to cease January 1st, 2020. And so I was asking for the city council to consider amending the ordinances. And last council, there was a directive from Mr. Montero to possibly study the matter. And I know that some citizens have written letters, and hopefully you have gotten those. And there was a Nextdoor poll that I had posted where 113 people had responded with 63% in the affirmative, 15% against, and 22 either undecided or needing more info. Many cities are making laws about Airbnbs and short-term rentals, several with regulations to allow them in favorable circumstances. Airbnb also, when I have talked to them on the phone, is happy to work with cities. We just need to, as a city, reach out to them, tell them what the rules are or what we're considering. And they'll be happy to, like, give you the listing numbers and everything like that. For example, in Hawaii, there are many where as long as there's, there's a business license, they have to show that in the photo of their listing. So you can clearly identify which ones have a registration and which ones don't. I just wanted to know if there's anything I can do to help you research, I'm happy to help. And I'd love to know, and those who are following this topic would like to know your thoughts on the matter if you'd be so happy to share that and when you might anticipate it being on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ravitch. Okay, I'm going to ask for the, anybody from the public who wants to address the city council?
Councilman?
How come? How are you?
I'm sorry, but I wish you a late happy birthday. And I'm so sorry that my councilman's son cut out our cake because, see, tonight I'm turning 84. And I sure would have enjoyed some cake for him. So maybe next year, he can get us a cupcake apiece, okay? So thank you, and I wish you many, many more. You're a young man, you have a long ways to go. And I'll talk to the councilman about getting us a cupcake, okay? Thank you.
I gave you a steak.
Yeah, but that was Friday.
Okay, anybody else wishing to address the city council? Okay, I'm going to, oh, no, she's running, she's running. No, that's good.
Well, I have a piece of, I have a piece of news that is good news, put on a hard subject, and hopefully it'll relieve some people one way or the other. Many of you have known about the Los Angeles National Cemetery up at the 405 and Wilshire Boulevard for many years. And you also may be aware that it has been full since 1982. So there have been no interments there for any of our veterans or military members since that time because the facility was full. So there has been a great need and for any of the veterans in the community or the military people in the community that wanted to be buried in a national cemetery, they've had to go to Riverside or Bakersfield or somewhere far away. And so you've heard me mention a couple of times that there was going to be a new development of what would be a columbarium up at West LA that will be on the west side of the 405 freeway and north of Wilshire, on the north campus of the West LA VA hospital property. And so the time has come to make the announcement that there's going to be an opening and dedication for that. And you are all invited. And I would also want to give a couple of pieces of information for other residents who may have needs at some time in the future. This would be for cremains only. And for people who maybe have cremains that they've been storing for years that would like very much to have them interred there. So here's the information on it. The dedication of the columbarium expansion at the Los Angeles National Cemetery will be held on Saturday, October 5th, at 10:00 a.m. The address there is 950 South Sepulveda Boulevard. And the speakers that day, the keynote address is going to be made by the Honorable Robert Wilkie, who is the current secretary of the Department of Veterans Affairs. There will also be a featured speaker, the Honorable Randy C. Reeves, who is the VA Undersecretary for Memorial Affairs. Featured speaker will be the Honorable Ted Liu, Congressman from California's 33rd District. The guest speaker is going to be a very great friend of the American veteran, and that will be Gary Sinise. And the master of ceremonies will be Hollywood legend Johnny Holiday. There are also going to be performances by Hollywood's own 300th Army Band and the glamorous Lindy Sisters from the era of swing. There's plenty of free parking on site, and there is information available on this flyer if anybody wants to make a copy of it or take a photograph of it or whatever. I understand there's also going to be some flyovers that day. And some of the technical issues that will go along with this, that columbarium property will eventually hold 90,000 niches. So it should accommodate the needs of the community here for an additional 25 to 40 years. years. So this has been a much-needed expansion. I've seen the site, it's gorgeous. This will be the original 11,000 niches, and then the other areas will be completed as the need arises. So if you have a need or have been storing cremains and would like to have them interred there, you can start making reservations as of October 1st for those to be done. And then the interments will happen there starting on October 15th. So if anybody needs any more additional information from that, you can contact me or you can contact our Veterans Affairs Commission, and we will be adding more information on our city webpage as it's available, and I believe this flyer will be on the webpage also. Would like to encourage any of you up there to come to the dedication ceremony. Again, that'll be on Saturday, October 5th, at 10:00 AM. And I think you will find it a very moving and inspirational ceremony. So hope you can join us that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? If not, I'll declare oral communications close-ordered. Okay, so Mr. Clerk, can we have your consent calendar, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have seven items on my consent calendar for your approval. Item eight, approval of the city council minutes for the regular meeting of June 11th, 2019. Item nine, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 10, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants. Item 12, resolution number 8136, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing, approving, and ratifying the submittal of the FY 2019/2020 State of California Office Traffic Safety Ride to Live Motorcycle Education Grant, MC20003. Item 13, resolution number 8137, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing, approving, and ratifying the submittal of the FY 2019/2020 State of California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program Step, grant number PT20057. Item number 14, resolution number 8139, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing a 30-minute parking restriction at 13344 Hawthorne Boulevard. Item 15, resolution number 8140, a resolution of the city council of the City of Hawthorne, California, authorizing the destruction of various finance department records pursuant to government code 34090, and resolution number 7170, motion to adopt.
Move to approve.
Just contact. I'd like to, before we do that, I would like to have discussion on item 14. So can we just move and approve all other items? Can you just say, state that? We're gonna approve all of them?
We can approve all other items with the exception of items 14.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mayor Protem and Montero.
Thank you.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
What's going on here again? Do we hear from this person again?
Yes, Mr. Gary Pizza Show. So he wanted 30-minute parking space right in front of his pizza restaurant to, for pickup, for pickup. So they have more turnaround there on that spot, so spot is available for people who come for pickup.
So why are we paying for it? Why doesn't he pay for it? It's a convenience for him. We always hear from him for everything. He complains about everything.
That is true, but Mr. Mayor, it has been city's policy that in public right away, the city has been accommodating residents with these type of, nobody, nobody, you know, unless we want to set up a new policy for...
Well, okay, fine.
Actually, he's paying for the painting, because curb painting is the only part that residents pay. But the, but the rest of the cost is coming, so he's paying almost half of it.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and accommodate him.
Hopefully pizzas stay hot.
So he's thinking maybe this is gonna affect his Yelp reviews and increase them or something, or what's going on? It's great pizza, though. I love, I like it. All right. So just remember now, you guys have 30-minute park, you could go and pick up your pizza at the 30-minute spot in a couple days. I move.
The vote reflects mayor and city council member, and council members voting yes.
We like him, he just gives us a hard time. I just wanted to give him a hard time. All right. So where are we at? Ordinances, please.
Ordinance, ordinance number 2192nd reading, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Hawthorne amending section 2.17.070, Youth Commission Duties and Responsibilities of Chapter 2.04 Administration, Civil Service, and Personnel of the Hawthorne Municipal Code Relating to the South Commission Purpose for Adoption.
So item, item number 17 is just the mission statement and their expansion on what their mission is, correct? Mr. City Attorney?
Yeah, I like that.
It's good, I like it.
Yeah, I like it.
You guys like that?
Yep.
All right, that's excellent. Do you guys like that over there, too? You guys are good? All right, we all support them.
Who came up with that idea?
Um, the group itself. It sounds like it.
Very good idea.
Excellent. I make the motion?
Second.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Question, Mr. City Attorney, do we still have the closed session at the end?
Yes.
Okay, how long would that be? 10 minutes? Okay. Mr. City Manager, your consent calendar.
I have items 19 through 21 for your approval.
I make the motion?
I'd like to pull number 21 for discussion.
Okay, so I make the motion for item nine, number 19 and 20. Please vote. I made the motion, Montero seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Discussion on item 21, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So I'm glad that we're going to go ahead and get a new noise study. And I just wanted to make sure that the consultant that we, the consultant Kaufman Associates, when we do the statement of work, are we going to work with them to change the sites that we had originally? When we, when we put down sensors in the original study in 2014, we had sensors in different parts of Hawthorne. And because of the increased air traffic, noise is being generated from other sources now, other than those that were generated in 2014. So I'm wondering, are we going to work with Kaufman and Associates to discuss and discover new areas of sensors? Because I think we need to, to have sensors in different areas other than the ones we had before.
Sure, yes, Mayor Protem. In fact, you will be in the advisory committee due to your experience. You participated in the previous study also, and your experience and your background in FAA, and also along with other members of other communities. They are welcome to join the advisory committee. However, there is a protocol. So the 14 CFR Part 150, as you know, Mayor Protem, is a FAA protocol. So we will be going to expand the locations of these sensors as far as we can, however, within the protocol from FAA. So we cannot just pick and choose, let's pick a spot somewhere in Hermosa Beach or another spot as far as, for example, City of LA past 110 freeway. We, we will expand as much as we can within the FAA protocol, because at the end of the day, we want to get reimbursed by FAA. We, we receive the grant, we have to stay within the grant parameters. So yes, by all means, we are going to expand as far as FAA protocol allows us.
Yes, we have a rational basis for wanting to change the areas of the sensors, though. I mean, because of the sources of the complaints, I mean, we can, we can justify changing them because we've had complaints from other places, other than the ones we had before. So I think there would be a rational basis for doing that.
Correct, yes, by all means. So we are gonna push for that, however, we have to stay within FAA protocols, you know, we have to deal with a very, very involved bureaucracy when we deal with FAA. And, you know, so hopefully, and at every step of the way, FAA has to approve, you know, our efforts and moving forward. So yes, this is the goal. That was the reason, otherwise, as you know, in 2017, we received approval from FAA in the previous noise study. The reason we turned around and we submitted, and it was difficult to convince FAA to approve our grant this early, right after the approval. It was due to the fact of that the air traffic changed in, in our airport very quickly by bringing more turboprops and corporate jets. So we were able to show them statistics of those type of aircrafts, and we received approval. However, you know, you will be along with us, we, we will be making those efforts, you are part of, an important member of the advisory committee to push, to extend those sensors locations. And we'll see how far we can within their protocols, by all means, yes.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it is possible that for us to see those FAA protocols and the map before you send it to FAA, to final product?
Absolutely, yes. In fact, FAA wants your approval first.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, because, you know, I agree with Ms. Valentine, because, you know, I live right, right on Ramona and Broadway, and those jets and...
Definitely put one there in Ramona, yes, in your backyard.
So they're going over those townhomes every day, every hour. Even now, they actually are like 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning, some jets are, are flying from, from the airport, from Hawthorne Airport. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes.
I move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city, city council members voting yes.
Mr. City Attorney, your consent calendar, please.
Yes, I have items number 23 and 24.
Okay. I move. Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes.
Do you think the meeting's good? Okay, we have a closed, a closed session, so I'm going to ask our city elected officials to go ahead and give their reports. I guess the more, more efficient, the better.
Yeah.
Okay?
I want people here.
Mr. City Treasurer, David Patterson?
I just want to thank the community for coming out and making voices heard, want to wish Mrs. Love a happy birthday. And yeah, look forward to seeing you guys next time.
City Clerk, Paul Jimenez?
Thank you to everyone who came out tonight and watching at home, I just have a few updates. The first one, I give, I want to give my gratitude to Sociedad Jose Martí for welcoming my son and I to their Cuban festival, we had a great time, so we really appreciate it. Your event was very popular on Nextdoor, it was viewed 13, had 1,300 views within a few hours, so great job. This is a reminder that we're holding a mock election at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Center on Saturday and Sunday, September 28th and 29th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. The mock election's gonna allow neighbors to test out the new voting system before the actual primary elections. We provided handouts to everyone in attendance tonight, and the location is highlighted on the back of your flyer in yellow. The first 100 people on Saturday and Saturday, I'm sorry, Saturday and Sunday, so are, who take part in the mock election will get a delicious cookie from Ban Americana Bakery on Hawthorne Boulevard. All ranges are welcome to take part in the election, so if there are any high school teachers or college professors watching tonight, have your students attend and give them some extra credit for participating. Thanks to Vaughn and Kiwana for recreation, from our Recreation and Community Service for working with the county to host this event for us. And again, just echoing my thoughts with our treasurer, happy birthday, Ms. Love, we are very happy to have you in our city, you are a beacon in the City of Hawthorne, so thank you. And thank you again to everyone for being here tonight.
Excellent. All right, Councilmember Watt?
Mayor, just want to thank everyone for coming out, and then also to wish Ms. Love a happy birthday, always a wealth of knowledge, and I've always kept all the sayings. I've made sure to, to listen, never buy meat where you get your groceries, I'll always remember that from you.
What was that one again?
Never buy your meat where you get your groceries. What was it?
I think I do.
But I'll, I'll make sure to work with Montero, too, to get you a piece of cupcake for the, for the next time, just next, next spirit out. But that's all for me, thank you all for coming out.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to echo what our city clerk said, it was a very important win for us to get a vote center in Hawthorne, so our people would not have far to travel. Take advantage of it, go to the vote center, go to the vote center at the time of the, the mock election, and go when it's time to vote. It's at the Betty Ainsworth Center, you won't have that far to travel, you can take an Uber from anywhere in Hawthorne, it won't cost you anything. Learn the process, so that when the ti, the time comes to cast your vote, you will be ready to vote and to take your neighbors with you and help them vote. I just want to say I had a wonderful time at the Cuban Festival, as usual, on September 15th. Mostly, I want to thank the organizers, the Balboas, and all of the people who work with them so, so tirelessly for spending all the time that it, thousands of hours that it must take to get all of those wonderful prizes together, really great prizes, and the music and the food. This is such a signature Hawthorne event, I can't say enough good things about it. Thank you all, keep it up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Mike Taya?
Well, I want to thank the Cuban Club for putting on that party, you know, I, I came here as a refugee with my family back in 1962. There weren't that many Cubans around in 1962, so whenever a new family came over, we would just go over there and bring them a couch or a refrigerator or whatever. I remember how that community would look for Cubans, because there weren't that many of us, you know? And over the years, we've prospered, we've done very well in this country. And it's really wonderful to go and, and just get a taste of your own culture, because you, we don't, I don't get a chance to do that very often, and so I really appreciate you guys for putting that on. And I was able to bring some veterans there that were in Iraq and Afghanistan, and give them a little bit of, of, you know, festive environment, and hang around with them, and so that, I had really enjoyed that, you know, thank you. I look forward, forward to doing that again next year. I, I saw a presentation the other day about, and I'm not, I don't consider myself an environmentalist or anything like that, but I, I like the environment, I like fish, I like the ocean, you know? And, and they were giving a, a presentation how much damage the plastic is doing to the fish, to the environment. And, you know, you hear things for the first time, you go, that can't be, you know, that's impossible. It's impossible for cruise ship to dump all their plastic out in the middle of the ocean. You know, and you hear something like that, you go, that's not, that's not real, and it turns out that it is real. And so when this gentleman, you know, is talking about pulling in a little bit of water, I'm sure, you know, I feel like, say, look, we can work with that, you know? This, this, if you really want to worry about the environment, you know, don't buy no straws or, you know, because now I'm pretty, you know, I like to bring this guy over here and have him do a 10-minute presentation, because it's really, it's an eye-opener, you know, what, what's really damaging our oceans, you know? So, but two very bright guys with very good arguments and, you know, trying to convince us to do, I'm not quite sure what they want us to do, but, you know, you know...
That's what I was trying to say.
You know, yeah. What is your why, you know? But it was, it was a good presentation, I really enjoyed that. And that's it, you know, thank you for the Cubans in the audience.
All right, this one's, we're going to do a city council discussion action item. Is everybody okay? It's Councilmember Monteros? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, as you know, we know, we are blessed that Hawthorne is a so diverse community with so many cultures represented in our neighborhood, so therefore, I am proposing that we would celebrate our diversity with an annual World Fest. I've been meeting with Vaughn and Diane at the Parks and Recs, so, so it would be called the 2020 World Fest on August 22nd, 2020, which is, will include music, food, you know, vendors with art crafts, mini carnival for kids, rock climbing, video games for adults etc. So this will be like, you know, bring all the cultures together, the Nigerians, the Cape Virgin, the Cubans, the Islamics, so all of them together in one place was to celebrate diversity, because you know, we know, diversity is on the attack in, in this country, so we want to show that Hawthorne is a seat of good neighbors, that we live in harmony with all these different cultures. So August 22nd, 2020, so I want us to do it as a city-sponsored event. And this actually will begin, because what I want to do is set up a committee, a planning committee, that 2020 will begin the World Fest, but then that committee is gonna take to beyond to 2022, when we celebrate our centennial, you know, 100th year of the seat of Hawthorne. So because we want to celebrate that. So what I want to propose is 2020, the World Fest, December 2021, bring back the Christmas Holiday Parade, and then the 2022, the centennial celebration, that could start with, I know the mayor won this, a 4th of July parade, celebrate our centennial anniversary, the summer fest, and the Christmas Holiday Parade. So we're gonna start planning from now until 2022, so we don't create this different series of events to collaborate our centennial on 2022, okay? So can I have a motion?
And the good thing is that the city manager's gonna look into getting us a stage, right?
Yes, he already says he's gonna put in the budget.
Everything's gonna work out, we'll plan everything out, I think everybody...
Vaughn, did you like that?
We're bringing back a golden age to Hawthorne.
Yes.
We're bringing it back.
We need to celebrate.
We lost it for the last 20, 30 years.
Okay, so the...
So we need a vac.
Yeah.
We want a vac.
Yeah, because, you know, the constituency, you know, the resident is liking what we're doing over here, so we have to make sure that we celebrate with all of you. So even the Neighborhood Association has to go get involved in this planning committee, the Youth Commission, the Parks and Recs Commission, so I'm gonna get everybody involved, okay?
What's your motion? Okay, does everybody, what's the request?
So the motion is to make this event a city-sponsored event, so we can begin planning for all these three different events that I'm bringing.
Does everyone concur? Yes, okay. We're all in concurrence.
All right.
Congratulations.
God bless you all.
All right, good stuff. So now your report.
Okay, my report. Okay, so I have a lot of information, be with me, okay? Because September was a quite busy month, so I did attend a lot of stuff, so, so I'll start with to say, again, Ms. Love, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor, happy birthday, because you guys all, September, my mom was, was born the same day as Ms. Love, September 17th, so that's why she's my adopted mother. And today is my brother's birthday, so happy birthday to all of you. No, no, it's younger than that. I have to say, you know, the Cuban Festival is, 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 is my, you know, I, almost people say I'm Cuban, right? Because I love the music, I love dancing, I love the food, so that is where, you know, we're going to model, you know, these World Fests because of the Cuban Festival. So, so you're gonna be on that committee, Ms. Balboa, okay? I'm recruiting you. No, habla inglés, yo también hablo español, no, no hay problema. So, and also I attend the Holly Park Lutheran Church picnic on, on, on the same day as the Cuban Festival, so it was pretty good. And on the 17th, that Dr. O'Brien mentioned, that, you know, part and breakfast, and I would encourage for all of you to go to those part and breakfast, because when you see the kids, all those academies representing all the three high schools, and the community coming together, and especially the business, you'll understand how outstanding work... and the community coming together and especially the business, you'll understand how outstanding work that the school districts are doing in the City of Hawthorne. So we need to support them. And then I attend the ADH City Summer on Economic Develop. And believe it or not, I brought a lot of material that I'm going to share with our famous and outstanding city manager. Because, you know, those ADH Cities Economic Develop, it was a forum that was all day that brought people from all over the world to talk about how we should do economic development in our cities. And even I end up talking with the Advisory Board of the Governor Newsom, Mr. Mendoza. I talked to the people from Torrance. I talked to the people from Ramosa Beach, people from Long Beach. Because they have done strategic planning about how to do economic development in the city, how to bring new business into the city. So actually, I'm going to put Arnie also on, because Arnie, I want you to look for 2021, if it is possible, that we can put on the budget some type of an economic developer manager or director, if possible. Because, no, Long Beach has one, the City of LA have one, Torrance has one, Ramosa Beach have one. So Hawthorne is on the crossroads, right? That we are the open to South Bay. So we need to take advantage of what's happening in Inglewood because if we don't bring these businesses, you know, we're going to pass by. It's like a train just go by 105 and the 405 and they never stop in Hawthorne. So we need to come up with something, some strategy that we're going to make possible that Hawthorne is going to get benefit of the regional expansion of all this business coming into our cities, our neighbor cities, okay? So please look into that. I know, you know, budget sometimes is tough, but look into that, even if it's part-time something, it will help. So the other thing I have over here is I attend the Congresswoman Maxine Waters, the Census Workshop at the Southwest College. And I have here information about jobs for the Census 2020. So they're hiring. So if you want to go online, 2020census.gov/jobs. Again, it's 2020census.gov/jobs. Because they are hiring, you know, like Census Field Supervisors, $22, $23 an hour. Enumerators, Census Trackers, $21 an hour. Recruiter Assistant, $23 an hour. Office Operations Supervisor, $21.50 and Clerks, $17 an hour. So and the office is going to be in Inglewood, but you can actually work from home, okay? So I have all this information about jobs. The other thing that I want to share with you is I got a letter from the Los Angeles County Superior Court asking us to help recruit grand juries. Okay, so I have the application. If you're interested to be in a grand jury, see me, I have the application and even the stamp envelope to the county, our court. So you can be on a grand jury because they need people to represent, okay? So come see me for that. And the last, I believe, that is right here on my street on Ramona, is 12500 Ramona Avenue. They just refurnished the building and it's going to be a school. It's called the Family First Charter School. That's free classes and programs for high school diploma, GED, ESL classes, citizenship classes, certified medical assistant, computer literacy, computer repair and network certification, independent study, student support service, all free. And it's right here in our neighborhood, okay? So come see me. I have all these files, all the information I can give to you. So don't leave without seeing me, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that's it.
Excellent. Excellent. So that's right. You hit on the nail on the head. This council does want to have a lot of activities. We want to come back. I call it the new golden age of Hawthorne. Economically, we're doing great. Residents are happy based on a poll that we did. We have a lot of plans on different things that we did away with unfortunately because of the the economic situation that we were put into. We didn't really want to be in this position. But now we've done, this council's done what is supposed to be done and managed our money correctly, invested in the right things. We've gotten help from our city treasurer, our city clerk with ideas on how to invest our money. The city council is coming up with like good judgment calls on different things and we're back on track economically. And now we have a method on obtaining sponsorship for different events from the different organizations and businesses that are here. So we'll be able to have parades, events and a lot of the things that we used to have before and new events as well, okay?
Oh, I need to go back too.
Oh my God, guys, when are we gonna? All right. So go ahead and then I'll close out. Go ahead.
I echo the sentiment of Councilman Montero about an economic development manager. It's something I've been advocating for years and I always hoped that we would get to the point where we could actually seriously consider. So I really do want to urge the city manager to look at that seriously so that we can, because I, you know, whenever you go to any conference involving economic development, one thing you notice is all the cities have economic development managers. And I understand the reason why we haven't had one, but I think we need to work seriously toward that end, if at all possible.
Yes, didn't we have enough developments? Amazon, Ring, Marriott?
Well.
Earth Cafe?
Right, right.
Sure, we do.
Yeah, we need more. We need more.
Will do, will do.
Yes. And also, I'm sorry, I was remiss. Happy birthday, Ms. Love. And many more. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got to go back. Thank you.
Go.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I forgot to mention something very important because if I didn't do this, I would be crucified. So last Saturday at Memorial Center, at the Singer Center, so the South Bay Lions Club and Hawthorne Peter Lions Club and the District 4L3, you know, with the collaboration with the Friend Inside, we gave glasses, free eye examination and free glasses to at least 175 individuals who show up at the Singer Center. So what I would like to do is on the last meeting in October, October 22nd, I would like just a presentation that I'm going to bring all the doctors and for them to give us a little bit of a report, what did happen there. And so we can recognize them because it was a city-sponsored event. But we had children and adults coming and we got eye exam, we got eye dilate, you know? They give them glasses right there. And the other ones that needed surgery, they refer them to the Lions Foundation for Surgery. And those, they didn't have the glasses, they are going to mail them the glasses for free. And believe it or not, they brought 18,000 pairs of glasses. So that is what I wanted to recognize them on October 22nd, a presentation item, so we can recognize them. And they're going to tell you that they're going to come back on October 2020 and do the same thing, okay? And the other thing that I want to mention that Carol Steinhauser, one of our city commissioners, her daughter Phyllis passed away two weeks ago. So she was, the funeral was last week. So thank you, the councilmen, for signing the card. But you know, Carol Steinhauser is the president of the Women's Club, you know, if you know, she is off the VFW post, the Women's Auxiliary. So she does a lot for this community. So if we can adjourn the meeting, Mr. Mayor, if you can adjourn the mayor on behalf of Carol Steinhauser and her daughter Phyllis, okay? Thank you.
So I also want to just let the Cuban Club know, Jose Martí Club know that I had a great time. I was there towards the beginning. So I didn't get to do the dancing that I usually like to do and see what Councilmember Tayeda had to offer. So maybe you got some videos so I can check that out and see what we got to compete with.
I did what I could, you know?
No, he's a good dancer. I've heard, I've seen. So, you know, a lot of people don't know, like, well, the Cuban community has had its different points in which it came to this country. Some came to, most like, the most famous location was Miami, but there was also New Orleans, New York. And here in the LA area, and one of those areas was Lenox, Dale Rose Avenue. Dale Rose Avenue, all of both sides, all the houses and everything were owned by like Cubans all the way up between 104th and I think all the way up to Century. Yeah, so it's like, I mean, there's a lot of history. And so I guess eventually everybody settled in and, you know, started, they started moving out of that area. So maybe there's a couple Cuban families there on Dale Rose still, but that's kind of some of the interesting history that Dale Rose Avenue in Lenox was just populated with.
Cuban Club used to be on 104th Street.
See, 104th and what? Inglewood? Berry.
Yukon, right around that.
So that's not a, that's not a coincidence. It's just because there was a concentration over there. So there's a lot of history and we're really excited to have the Cuban community here in the City of Hawthorne active here within the city. So. I'm going to adjourn so we can go into a closed session. Does anybody want to speak on the closed session? Oh, and I just want to remind you guys that tomorrow, there's going to be a Coffee with the Cop event from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 in the morning across the street here at the New Marriott. So Coffee with the Cop tomorrow from 8:00 to 10:00 in the morning across the street here at the Marriott. So come and join the, our police force and get to say hello to them. Okay, anybody want to say anything about the closed session? We are now adjourned and I'm going to ask our councilmember colleagues to go in the back so we can get going. We are now adjourned, and I'm going to ask our council member colleagues to go in the back, so we can get going. Mr. City Attorney, what can you tell us?
Ah, yes, we met in closed session regarding the Boring Company negotiations regarding the easement, and staff has been advised.
So we're going to close this meeting in honor of Ms. Carol, Mrs. Carol Steinhauer's daughter. She's, Mrs. Carol Steinhauer is one of our commissioners, for two commissions, actually, I believe. And her daughter Phyllis passed away recently. So we want to close this meeting in honor of Phyllis Steinhauer, okay? So this meeting is now adjourned, okay?